Good morning. Today is May 27th. It is 10:01. Call to order, Mr. Ed Hawkins?
President.
And Tom Bloom's here. Eldon Callan is not here. Ask if you rise for a moment of silent meditation, then we'll pledge to the flag.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome. We will start with consents and approvals.
We have eight celebrations, $2,236 cents for tax year 2014, judiciary orders of May 20 and 27, and statement of services for Armored Sted and Crane, general county vouchers, $69,977.86, coal severance funds, $16,975.40, Kent Muffley, $120.99, Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,008.70, Mason Dixon Park, $8.2130, magistrate court, $43.50, 911, $895.11, law enforcement forfeiture, $5,027.50, a total of $95,707.10. And I have budget revisions for Arnettsville Heating System. This is moving in money to pay for their heating. Circuit Clerk Extension Office.
Motion to approve.
And second has been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, it passes. Okay, this time I will not forget comments from the public. At this time, if there's anyone who would like to speak, feel free to stand up, state your name, your address, and you're more than welcome to speak. Is there anyone here who would like to speak from the public? Sure, you're the public.
I am.
You can, go ahead.
I'm actually on behalf of the tax office, but I can't stay for the entire week.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to let everybody know that the list was published of the length of taxes.
Yes.
It is posted on the front of the courthouse, not in its entirety because it's so thick. So if anybody would like to see the list in its entirety, they can come down to the tax office, lower level, and in two weeks, we will present the list to people.
Okay. Thank you very much for doing that.
Sure.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak from the public? Okay. Good, we're moving along. Okay, we have introduction of new employees. Kent Muffley.
Well, Lori isn't here. I'm not sure if she's coming.
Okay.
So...
Could we introduce them?
These two gentlemen.
If you'd like to just stand up and state your name, so we officially do it.
I'm Jim Alford.
Okay, Jim.
I'm Al Fruskin.
Mackenzie Embers.
Okay, Jim L. Mackenzie. Do I have a motion to approve them as?
Yes, you approve.
Okay, nice. Second, there's been a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, no. Thank you very much. It's official, we're required to do this. We welcome you and good luck and hope you have a great summer programs. They'll take care. So you don't have to stay and be tortured if you don't want to.
Go to work.
Yeah, go to work. We'll have breakfast and go to work.
We all signed up downstairs.
Did, yes. Did you all do the paperwork and so on?
Yes. Excellent.
Downstairs? I did it here. I didn't do it downstairs. Did she go downstairs?
Yes.
I checked just to make sure you have all the paperwork and everything in line.
Where is that?
I'm walking that lady. I can go with me.
Follow her.
Okay, Colin will take you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, Renetta. Grants.
Yes.
And money.
Yes. Well, I've got good news today.
Excellent.
We have, the West Virginia Humanities Council has sent the grant agreement for the Martin Bosson Project. That is the documentary called Ageless Friends. The grant award is $6,934.43. The grantee, Martin, and his group has agreed to put in $8,158.58. The total project is approved at $15,093.1. They're expected to be filming in the area June 28th through July 8th, and we're excited for the project to begin. So today I just wanted to present the grant agreement, and there's also certification, just certification about discrimination, non-discrimination, equal opportunity and such.
Do we need to move to accept it?
Do you want each one separately?
Yeah, let's do each one separate.
Okay. Move to approve.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, it passes.
Okay, we also have a grant agreement for the West Virginia Division of Culture and History on behalf of the Archives and History for the Records Management and Preservation Board. We received three awards. We had three applications. We received three awards for the prosecuting attorney, $58.68, to purchase color scanners that are compatible with the county's record management system, the sheriff, $2,0563, to purchase a high-volume crosscut shredder, and the county clerk, $10,000, to purchase large format oversized color scanner. So we're just asking for the president's signature on that today.
Motion to allow the president to sign.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
What if I say no?
It would be a tie.
Okay. I'll give you that blue one.
We're not turning down money.
The blue pen.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Governor's Community Participation Grant Program reimbursement request for Mon County EMS. They did technology upgrades for 10 of their ambulances to include mobile gateways. They spent $9,000 in grant funds, $17,947.8 in local funds, so the project was $26,094.78. So they have finished their project, so we have a certificate of completion and the reimbursement request.
Motion to approve.
Second, properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes.
Okay, we have two regular reimbursement requests. One is for the HUD grant for MAYSP through the city of Morgantown for the month of April 604.14, and the JABG grant also for MAYSP, $6,045.64.
Motion to approve the grants.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's been approved. Passes.
That's all I have.
And just, just for your information, in the Wall Street Journal this week, they had a large article about the grave site where Martin is taking care of James Wickline, and they had different stories and so on. But it's a really neat article, all about that. So I sent that to them. They did not see it, so they posted it up in their country, too. But they're very excited about coming in, and I know we're in the process of trying to find out exactly where we are on the naming of the bridge. We believe that it was approved, but we just want to get clarification, and we're talking with Joe Statler, and then I also want to invite Charlene Marshall to be involved with that, too. Thank you. Now we have bid opening for Ventrac. Well, do I have to wait? Because it's 10:20. Yeah, better wait. I don't want to get in trouble. Okay, there's two of them I have to wait for. Correspondence. Response from Commissioner of Highways regarding road repairs. This is worth a response. Would you like to?
Would you like to?
Oh, sure. I'd be honored. We have been working as a commission to try and get more clarification and concerns about the road conditions and what has been going on in Montague County. We have received a very positive letter from Paul Maddox, Secretary of Transportation, and I'll read it. Dear Commissioner Bloom, Governor Earl Ray Tomlin has forwarded your letter dated April 13th, 2015, on behalf of your constituents regarding their concerns with road conditions throughout Montague County to the Division of Highways for an investigation and reply. I am pleased to advise you of the following items that are being implemented to improve the condition of the roads in Mon County. We are supplementing our Mon County workforce with 15 additional employees and two Department of Corrections crews to complete ditching and pothole patching throughout the county. We are also in the process of renting special equipment and developing a schedule specific to pothole patching. This is in addition to allocating approximately $8 million to pave or surface treat 34 miles of roads in Mon County. Our central office staff in Charleston will monitor the progress of the work and help support the activities. Please be assured that we're making every effort to form work on the roadways in Mon County as quickly and efficiently as possible and ensure the continued safety of the travel in public. Thank you for writing and sharing your constituents' concerns. I appreciate your continued support and interest in highway matters. Should you have any other questions or require additional information, please feel free to contact my office. We have a second letter. Is that worth reading, too, or is that?
Oh, on the ADA study?
Yes.
It's just asking for comments if there are any, and this is the area that's in front of the spa and at the intersection of Wings, LA.
Yeah, and also, and again, the one question of concern of the picture is the third, well, the third page where the pole's in the middle of the sidewalk, and where at the end of the sidewalk, there's a pole in the middle of the, I mean, you can't get by it. So hopefully they'll be able to readdress that situation. Did you want to make any comments?
This is, I mean, this is extremely good news.
Yes.
I would like to make sure that we direct a thank you.
Yes.
Even though it's probably not necessary to thank them, but it is their job, but still, the fact that we got a positive response and people chose to, you know, acknowledge us in Charleston, so particularly from the Division of Highways, this is really quite nice.
And I agree with Ed exactly. I would like to do a thank you, and it's not that they just acknowledged it. For the first time, I believe they realize there is, there is a concern. They're willing to bring 15 additional employees. They're bringing more equipment and more funding and give us a way of how they're going to actually do it.
Exactly.
So we'll give you a letter, Ben, so you can see the letter to them. But I'm thrilled that, I believe, from the constant pressure, and I want to congratulate not only the community, the business community, they've supported us in writing the letters, and I believe this is the first time we're really going to see some action, and I'm very appreciative.
Yes, as well as Eldon, who is not present today, but his frequent trips to Charleston have been fruitful.
Yes. So this is actually, this is very good news. I'm very excited, and I look forward to working with them. And again, I do also want to say that the delegates did meet with the DOH, and I want to thank them, and what I like is it's a bipartisan approach, and that's what I believe this Mon County is now working on, bipartisan approach for economic development for our community. And I'm very excited that we're starting to touch the surface.
Cooperation.
Yes. So I'm real pleased. I agree. It's nice to have some positive news. Okay, as we also mentioned, the Division of Highways, University Avenue ADA Study. Is there, basically, this was just, yeah, and it does need to be done. I think anyone who's been down there will realize that. Is there other correspondence? Okay, yes, I do want to read this. To temper the great news, we in this community, and especially the three county commissioners, sometimes have to relate unfortunate negative news. This, we just received certified mail today, which is basically, we're giving, we're writing to give you notice that there will be a mass layoff at the Mon County Mine located at 99 Shamrock Road, Wana, West Virginia on Friday, July 24th, 2015. This mass layoff is expected to be of indefinite duration. The Montague County Mine was temporarily idled on March 31st, 2015. The situation was expected to be temporary. However, due to severe deterioration of market conditions, the Mon County Coal Company is converting some of the layoffs from temporary to indefinite duration. All potentially affected employees have been notified that the layoff from employment will be of indefinite duration. Those employees who are expected to be placed on indefinite layoff will be placed in this status beginning on July 24th, 2015, with all indefinite layoffs accomplished by August 7th, 2015. There gets a list, but I do want to say, under the UMWA, there's 428 individuals. Under the non-union, there's 160 employees. We have notified Cecil Roberts, the chief elected official of United Mine Workers. If you have any questions or want any additional information, please contact Michael D. DeCarlo, Superintendent. If you want to make a comment before I do...
It is unfortunate that we have to give news of this nature to this county, but still, there is a lot of positive to overcome, so.
And again, that's a total of 428 plus 160. It's 588 people. That is clearly affected in Montague County. Will affect everything from what we do in this county to the school system, so it's something I think we need to be aware of, and hopefully we can work to see how we can either give them some new job training or other alternatives, and hopefully we can move forward on that. Okay, it's still not 10:20, so we will move to unfinished business recycling program. Go ahead.
What I have to announce is the Household Hazardous Waste Day has been set for Saturday, September 19th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00. And there'll be more details coming out on that. I just wanted to let you know.
And that will be on our website, www.montcounteryrecycle.com. That has had enormous amount of hits. We're doing very well on that, and we are getting information and suggestions.
This is information from the state January. The recycling program, the cost, we have certain events during the holidays, weekends. That's a year, but that's excluding holiday weekends.
Right. There's twofold situation here that we want to talk about. The first is, we have allocated funds, and that was one of the recommendations for next year's budgeting. It was also a priority for the individuals in Montague County. We negotiated a price, and we've come down from what it was at one time, and we were moving again from first and third Saturday to almost four Saturdays a month. Basically, we're looking at, a couple of things we wanted definitely. We wanted to have the roll-off containers there, so they didn't come and go, and that's where we ran into a problem. We are not going to have, if you see here, the 20-yard container for the elderly and handicapped, because it's the same price. So we're all, they're all going to be 30-yard open-top containers. The cost per haul will decrease down to $260, and with a minimum of five hauls per weekend, one haul per container, but we definitely will have it. The operation is from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. If you go to the second page, Jamby is not able to be here. He had to go up to one of the parks. We were trying to come up with a fiscal cost to give an idea. Now, some people might say, okay, well, last weekend, we did eight bins, but that's because you're doing it every other week. We believe there'll be somewhere no more than five or six bins per, and you can see what the total cost would be, the 45 weeks being the four times a month, and then the dates that we will not do it on the holidays. So what I would like to do is move forward and have permission to get the official contract, so we can sign it, so we can move forward, and the public then knows what's going on. We'll be able to state all the dates, the times, and the costs. And I do want the people to understand that there is a cost to this, and I know, Ed, you've been talking about it, too. You know, it's something that we really want to move forward on, but it isn't for free. And I want to clarify that.
We know that the public is wanting always to have what they had before, and this isn't possible. So they would please be bearing with us. Also, keep in mind that the city of Westover is giving us a place to do this on a daily basis, as well as we have in the western end of the county. If you do wish to sort, you can go to Mason Dixon Park, and I believe we have set up in Blacksville as well.
I received one of the suggestions. Someone said, would we want to have like a table, and the people would volunteer to explain how the recycling program is?
Exactly.
And they said, so we're starting to get some good ideas and some programs, and I'll explain part two in a second, but could I have a motion to allow me to request the contract?
I would so move.
I second that. It's properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. The second is a really exciting program. What we found in Portland, Oregon, they were doing it, and someone made this recommendation, that what can we do about food recycling? And we are starting a process, and it's called, I didn't know there's an official name for it. It's called the gleaning process. Fruit, vegetables, bread at the farmer's market is collected at the end. We have people from Christian Help and so on. We have people who pick it up and then take it to the benefactors right now, the Bartlett House, Boys and Girls Club, and area churches. One of the things that I've asked Jamby to do with your permission is to look into expanding this to all the farmer's markets and to start seeing where people would be willing to donate, and we'd have a general area, and then we could expand who the benefactors are, and especially the homeless. Health Department has already given their seal of approval. Because it's not processed, we are able to do this. So when we now talk about recycling, we're now not only talking about recycling the materials and the glass, but we're also talking about recycling food that would normally be thrown away, that now will be recycled to the needy and the people who need it. So I'm really excited about that. It's going to be put on the website, and again, people have suggestions or ideas, and this came from a person who was from Portland, Oregon, who asked, could we do it, and didn't even know that it was called the gleaning process, and we are going to start this process and expand, and I'm very excited about it.
I would move that we go ahead with this expansion of this idea.
I second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And again, I can't thank Jamby enough, and Tracy, knob and shoe, who has been working with us, and we're going to work, and our next plan is to get all the parties together to discuss how we're doing this, and maybe see how we can help all the areas, whether it be Westover, Star City, and so on, so Blacksville. So I'm very excited about this recycling.
Might be able to include as well a voluntary contribution. In other words, if you have canned goods that are close to expiration, that sort of thing, we know that they're still good, that we could include with this.
And that's where we're going to come up with an idea and a process. I think that's really good. The third thing I do want to bring up is, there was a question yesterday about, they saw one of the solid waste authority trucks, which was given to Westover, and it dumped exactly where it's supposed to dump, that Republic has set up for recycling. There seems to be some confusion because of the bins, and we're getting it clarified, so we can clarify this position. I've asked Jamby to give a report next week to explain how they keep a separate, Republic keeps a separate bin for contractors, and Westover, and we're following the process. There was some confusion that people thought that they were being mixed together, and they are not. We want to get a very clear, in fact, one of the suggestions Eldon made, and we met with Republic, they're going to give an accounting of what we are recycling and the percentage, and we're going to have all that, so people realize we are doing it. I don't know if the mayor wants to say anything, because, you know, you knew, you're the one, I went to the mayor so he could explain to me cause of the confusion. If you look at the pictures, it doesn't tell the whole story, and I don't know if there's anything you want to say at all.
Just what we discussed yesterday, the person taking the picture was confused.
Yeah.
The driver, our driver, saw the lady taking the pictures, and he kind of acknowledged her, and she wouldn't acknowledge him. He would explain to her what was going on. Had she taken the time to listen to see what was going on. So it's just another case of somebody not having all the facts.
All the, yes.
You know, we're not the only one that dumps there.
Right.
The university comes there, and there's other people that bring recycling, single-stream recycling in, too. And like Ed and I talked about earlier, single-stream recycling, when you dump it, you've got a pile here and a pile of garbage here. It's kind of hard to tell the difference, because it's all mixed in together. So, but, you know, we've been doing that. We get slips every time we go down there, and thanks to that website you put on there, we've been real busy.
Yes, you have. I know you...
Yeah, thanks a lot for that.
Well, we appreciate it.
Whatever that is, just confusing.
Yeah, and I appreciate it. But we'll get a clarification report, because, I mean, there was a concern, and then afterwards, the person said, well, they interpreted one way, and that's why we wanted to make sure that it is being separated. So we will get that, so I appreciate that.
You're at your 4:20.
Okay, good. We're now at a 10:20. Bid opening for the Ventrac mower. Is there any bids? Really? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, wow. That resolves, I guess, that resolves and causes, okay, we may talk about that during then.
Exactly.
Yeah, we'll talk about, we have Kat coming in from Chestnut Ridge. So we'll talk about. Wow, that was a shocker. Now, we still can't go to the 10:31. Received the bids for the recycling. Oh, okay.
Oh, good.
Come on in, new employee. Hi, how you doing?
My name is Natalie Bub.
Hi, Natalie. Where you from?
Morgantown.
Well, that's good.
Thank you, Mark.
Did you go to high school here, too?
Yes.
Which school?
Morgantown.
Okay, we'll accept that, too. I couldn't say negatives, and any of them sucked.
I just got to say.
Is there anything you want to say?
Yeah, I would like to. Natalie is a new employee. She started, actually, May 15th, but she did a couple of days of training with us this week. She's her first full week with us. She's coming on as a personal property deputy.
Oh, okay.
She's replacing Vicki McCourt, who is replacing Linda McCourt. Linda's retiring. And so we're fortunate to have Natalie. She interviewed with us, and we were thrilled that she accepted the position. She brings a lot to us from experience, from outside of what she's done, working for TD. So she's dealt a lot with customer service, and of course, being in our office, you're a personal property, dealing with customer service. So we're excited, and wanted to bring her forth here today to the commission with approval for coming onboard with us.
Motion to approve.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Natalie, we're glad that you're onboard, and Mark has really changed the whole atmosphere and attitude of the personal contacts, so I'm real pleased. So welcome aboard, and if you have any questions, see Mark, and we'll pass it on the mark. Well, thank you. Welcome. Okay, new business, or there isn't any other old businesses, there?
Yeah.
Okay. Letter of support, PRT system tiger grant. Give a quick synopsis of that. Oh, oh, good. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is simply a letter of support for a tiger grant application. The university's filing for upgrades for the PRT, replacement of their electrical system, replacement of the vehicles, as well as infrastructure. They have actually a rather refined upgrade program for the PRT. The NPO passed a letter of support, which has gone to the university, and the city of Morgantown is also considering a letter of support as well.
Is this letter of support also including a possible expansion of their summer hours?
No, sir. It's just an upgrade.
I didn't see it on this letter, so.
It's just an upgrade for the infrastructure that actually operates it. The technology that's running is 1975 technology, circuit board, and it's actually replacing it with modern technology.
Do we need to read the letter, or we don't have to read the letter, do we?
You don't think so.
No, we're not, okay.
Motion to approve the president's signature on this letter of support.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes? He's, yeah. And what is your title, so official title?
I'm the executive director of the Morgantown Montague County MPA.
Right. And as Eldon likes to give tidbits of information, I just want you to know how old I am. I was there when Tricia Nixon pushed the button to start. Unfortunately, I was not on the side that you would think. I was with the protesters. But I was in college then, but that was an exciting time.
You protested?
Yes, I did. My hair was down to my waist, too. Things have changed. Okay, 10:29. I'll wait. I'm sorry, we still can't. How about reports from any elected officials? Anybody like to? Nope. Okay. We're moving quickly. Would you have any report?
I actually have very little to report. I have one observation. I missed last, my first meeting last week, my commission meeting, on the reason that my niece was getting married, but she was getting married out of the country. So it put me in a position of being a stranger in a strange land. And I would like to think that, much like I received such great, really, help in being in Italy, that we in West Virginia would also, in Morgantown, provide this support when people come to us. In other words, be thinking, when somebody asks you something, not to dismiss them, because it would have been very easy, and I only had one incident where somebody actually refused to give aid to somebody who did not speak Italian and could only point to the picture on the menu. So that is my report.
Okay. Really, I have no report. I'm real pleased with the direction we're going, and especially, I'm getting very excited about the Black Bears and the opening. That's all I'm hearing from everyone in the community, and I just think this is going to be a great. June 19th is going to be a really good day, so I'm looking forward to it.
Even though the tickets have not been mailed yet.
Yes. Oh, but that's going to be brought up. Yeah, we're going to talk about the tickets. I'm glad you said that. We will bring that up under her report in the work session. Now it is 10:30, so we are able to see, and how many thousands of bids did we get?
Thank you.
The weapon.
Go first. Okay. This is from Mountain, Northern Mountain State Metals. I respectfully submit this bid with consideration of Montague County Commission for three PRT vertical balers. I requested a bid of $4,000 per unit totaling $12,000 be considered and approved by the county commission. Thank you.
Okay, and this is the only bid from Enterprise Sanitation. I didn't even know it was Enterprise West Virginia. And they would be, like, put a bid on the chain...